Which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the November City Council meeting, Tuesday, November fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, seven after seven P. M. All present, Councilmember Rieker, Rickert was out of town this week, so. Is that our workshop? We had a good discussion then, and we should have a nice, efficient meeting tonight. So, we will, clerk read the meeting policy for this rabble of crowd we have here tonight.
The agenda printed or amended will be followed, so all necessary needed actions by the council will be addressed. The agenda can be amended by proper motion. Businesses from the floors welcome and allotted for on our agenda. When comments from the floor are made, you must first be recognized by the mayor, second state your name and address to the record, and third you'll have no more than three minutes to state your comment or concern. And there are copies of the agenda available at the back of the room, and please turn your cellphones off. Thank you.
Anybody watching online, if you ever come to a meeting, that's our policy, you'll know ahead of time, so. Take a motion to approve or amend the meeting agenda for tonight?
So moved.
Second. Motion is second, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Sheriff's report, Lieutenant?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, city staff, citizens. For the month of October, two thousand seventeen, Sheriff's Office deputies responded to one hundred and thirty-four calls for service in the city. Was a nice month, we talked last month, bar none calls were up, but we're down to two this month, so that's a good number for us to see. A few noteworthy calls for service for the month, on the fourteenth of October, a theft was reported in the one eight six hundred block of the Akama Street Northwest. At that location, a camper on the property had been broken into, and power tools and pieces of construction-type equipment had been taken. At this point, there's no suspects in that case, but the investigation is ongoing. And then on the twenty-fourth, burglaries of multiple businesses inside a, in the building in the one nine seven hundred block of Iguana Street were burglarized. Forced entry was found, and miscellaneous items were taken from inside of each of the businesses there. Our crime scene unit came up and processed the scene for physical evidence, and that evidence will be analyzed and processed, and, you know, any leads that that develops will be followed up on. So at that point, at this point, the investigation is still ongoing. And then on the twenty-seventh, suspicious activity was reported in the one nine nine hundred block of Iguana Street, where a chain-link fence was cut around the storage facility. They followed into the storage facility and looked and found a locker that had a lock cut off, but nothing had been taken from inside. So, kind of like we've talked about, there's so many people out there that are looking for easy ways to take things from good citizens that have worked hard for their possessions. We just always remind people to continue to try to do the right things, and even like we talked about in some, in these cases, everybody was doing the right things, and they still had things taken. So, we're trying our hardest to find some suspects with these, and through proactive enforcement, trying to deal with anybody suspicious or out of the ordinary. But again, that's when we ask for the public's help to call us when they see something out of the ordinary. And we get very good, very good response from the citizens in now then, they're very good about calling us when they see something. And then just a couple of quick things coming up. You know, the holiday season is approaching, online shopping is a very big thing now. A couple of things we always try to remind people of, if you're having packages delivered, make sure and get them picked up off of your, the exterior of your house as soon as you can, or if you're going to be away, have a neighbor pick them up. Because there are people that just drive around neighborhoods looking for packages on porches and people's doorsteps. And it, so the sooner you can get it in, or even if you can have it delivered to somebody who you know is home during that time, it's always preferable. And along those lines, this time of year burglaries start to escalate a little bit. People understand that people are out shopping for the holidays, and they have things in their homes, you know, new gifts and things like that, so take whatever precautions you can to be safe, and judicious with keeping those things locked up. So, it's always, it always does help, every little bit does, so. That's all I have.
Counsel, have any questions? Would you say the, Lieutenant, the year-to-date numbers are finally running true?
Yes, I think what I would tell you is our, our numbers that we're able to pull out of our, our data system now seem to be consistent. So I would start look, using these as being able to look at trends and things of that nature.
So, do you know on the assaults, is that primarily bar none? Are your deputies reporting assaults outside of bar none in now then?
I think there are, there are some, but I think a lot of our assault cases come from bar none. I don't have an exact breakdown of what that looks like. And in the future, if you'd like that, I could certainly look at that, but I think without diving into the numbers, or I haven't for this meeting, but I would suspect that a, a good portion of those are bar none.
And the misdemeanor, is it misdemeanor arrest there?
Mm-hmm.
What would make up generally misdemeanor arrest?
That would be anything from thefts to different, thefts would be a good one, disorderly conducts, harassing communications, things of that nature. They're typically the little bit lower level of crime. Yeah, that would, I would say mist, for misdemeanors, you're disorderly conducts, thefts, harassing communications. Those would probably be the biggest ones.
Is it non-contact or in there?
As far as?
Would that be in the misdemeanor, if somebody violated a no-contact?
Correct, yeah.
I see that quite often in fighting reports.
Any of those, any of the no-contact order violations and stuff, generally the, the first offense is a misdemeanor. But they can go all the way up to a felony depending on the relationship between suspect and victim, and how many times they've violated the orders in the past.
We appreciate finally having accurate information and timely information, so.
As do we. And I was going to ask the follow-up question, I've been sending up the whole calls-for-service report, is that something that the council would like to continue? I can, it hasn't been a burden for me, it seems to be going well, so if it's useful for the council, I can continue sending that.
It is not a burden, I think it's helpful.
I'll continue to send that, and if for some reason you don't get it, please let me know, and even if it's after a meeting, I can get it to you then.
All right. Thank you very much. No-floor items. Planning and zoning. Commercial industrial land use, question in the park and trail. Have you decided at the workshop to separate those two? Have a motion. Having updated search area for additional commercial land. For those of you that haven't listened to the Thursday workshop, this is simply an opportunity to take a look at where we might expand commercial area in our two thousand forty comprehensive plan. It is not a foregone conclusion that these would be the areas. It is not a foregone conclusion there would be this much area, but simply starting out with land that's contiguous to the commercial area that's downtown now then, on the corners of five and twenty-two, extending east and west of that intersection, there's some opportunities, and so we'd like to take an op, this opportunity to check with property owners in those areas to see what their interest might be in expanding the commercial area there. There's also a couple of council members that recommended there be forty acres in the southwest corner of the city be considered for commercial opportunities. Ten acres deep off of one hundred and eighty-first, running from Baw to the edge of the city, ten acres north of the, of the street there. So we have put that together in a map and authorized the planner to send out letters to people that own property in that area to ask them to attend a workshop and give us some, some feedback on the, their desire or lack of desire to participate in that expansion. So as we go forward with our other workshops and develop our updated comprehensive plan, we have feedback from the affected parties. So again, it's nothing that's set in stone at this point, it's simply an opportunity to take a look at options and hear feedback from the residents. Separately, we have a park and trail plan, that there was some discussion on whether it's extensive enough or too extensive. And the discussion at the workshop was to send that to the park committee for evaluation and feedback to the council. That would also be part of the workshops for the residents, open to the residents before we update our comprehensive plan next year. So do we have any specific motions on that?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I want to make a motion to approve the possible commercial light manufacture expansion areas that was prepared by Liz, and also to send the park and trail plan to the park commission for comments.
Second.
All right, motion is second, any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainbow.
I'm wondering if we should consider notifying the property owners that surround this additional area that is, for lack of better word, in consideration for, for, for commercial zoning, such as we would do for a public hearing. I think we will get, I, I think it's to the, to the benefit of the council and to the residents that, that they are made aware of that also, so that they also could have input into this expansion.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. We, we talked about it at the workshop, that we want to make sure that it was clear, everything's above board, that nothing's attempted to be slid by anybody. And I think the more open we can make that, I think it's also one of the reasons I wanted to have the, the downtown area workshop defined as, as time-wise on the day of the workshop, so we could have a focus on that area and a focus on the southwest in case it, one or the other got more attention and drowned out the other discussion. So I think it would be worthwhile to notice it, again, very specifically as a workshop for discussion. That we're not taking any action at this point, we're simply gathering information, but I think it would be reasonable to notice it like we do other public hearings, to say you're invited to a workshop, to, to weigh in on not only the property owners, but those that abut the, the property.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainbow.
I would ask Councilmember Bettinger and Councilmember Bryan to amend their motion that the notification for the meeting would also include the same parcels if indeed this was, say, a true public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I, I don't think we're, I think this, this first part is just to see if the, the parties that own the property that's in the highlighted areas are interested in being in that commercial area, and so then they may be removed if they're in opposition to doing that. So I think the first step is to see if they're interested. And then at a later date, if they are, then everybody gets invited in to comment on them areas. That's the way I understood from our workshop, is how we were going to proceed forward.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainbow.
I, then, then maybe I am off base, I, I don't know. I thought they were going to be receiving this letter inviting them to the meeting on April, or January eighth. That the draft that was has in the workshop packet. That this letter would be going to these property owners, inviting them to come to the January eighth meeting. If that indeed is not what's going to happen, and we take, we have the opportunity to invite the surrounding neighbors at a later date, I would be comfortable with that, but I, I was under the impression that they were being notified.
I, I can see what Councilwoman Bettinger was saying. Really, this time is, is why notify people that wouldn't be affected if these property owners didn't want to participate? So I do think it's, you're going to get attention to it anyway, and people will come in and weigh in on it. But I think, to the point of the workshop, yes, it would make more sense at this point, notify the property owners with the letter that was drafted, and see if they're even interested before we go and expand it and get everybody excited about something that may not be happening. But we need to make sure that, once we find out who is interested, and there's the option of expanding to those areas, if it's, if it looks like there is, to that point, we notify broadly so other people could weigh in on it. But I think it's, it's appropriate as it stands with the idea that residents will get to weigh in on it.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainbow.
So then, okay. So the people that are in the highlighted area are going to get a letter, not necessarily this letter, or is it this letter, and it says your presence is requested at an open house to be held on whatever date at seven P. M. And it's, the attached maps show possible expansion areas. So is this going out with the map to those areas, or is Liz sending a letter to these residents to say, call me? How?
Mr. Mayor, the intention was, that letter that you have was to go to these people highlighted, and then just saying, hey, we're going to have an open house, we want your opinion, do you want it in your property or not? And then, and then once we determine that, you guys will have to decide which areas you want to remove or keep, and then we would send out a letter to another letter, saying we're going to have the open house again, or the meeting, and we're inviting all you people that are going to be affected by it either personally or around it.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainbow.
Ms. Ledusha, then, so there'll be a second meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
After this, okay, all right.
Yes, once, once we know where the interested parties are and what, what we'd be drafting at that point. All right, so we have a motion and a second to proceed with the letter from the planner on the commercial industrial land potential or possible expansion areas to those property owners, and to move the park and trail plan to review by the park committee to give feedback to the council. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Based on discussion at the workshop, I'd like to make a motion to request that the road and bridge committee review the five-year road plan improvement plan based on the changes that we are going to be recommending for two thousand eighteen, as well as using a fifty percent assessment value.
I'll second that.
Motion is second, discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
So this would be with the assumption that a four hundred thousand dollar a year budget for overlays with the fifty percent assessment, so two hundred of that would be coming from the city and two hundred from property owners?
If we, if we wanted to use the, well, it was a matter of assuming that there would be a fifty percent assessment, is the current plan what we wanted to do and to budget for, or can we reevaluate it to go ahead with the two hundred from the city and two hundred from the residents? Do we wanted to use a target number of spending four hundred thousand a year? I guess we, we never really came up with a not, a specific, you know, I, item, it was a matter of here's, here, what, what's recommended, at least as I remember it from the workshop, was use that fifty percent number to co, to come up with a, see if that affects the next five years of improvements, and if anything could be changed or moved around or added in because that, that five-year plan didn't include everything that was on Shane's original evaluation. So some things could get theoretically moved up.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
Yeah, I would, I would say to use that four hundred as a, a target. If it's a little more, a little less, then we can adjust our budgets accordingly, but I would say that's, right now, what we have budgeted for this year and what we plan on, if we stay with that without raising taxes in the future, that would work. So I think the four hundred thousand dollars number is a good place to start. And then, like I said, if it's up a little, use it for a target, if it's a little higher, a little below, we're going to, we're going to adjust things accordingly.
And that'll be reevaluated once we see the feasibility setting, because maybe fifty percent is not the right number. But we talked about the workshop, that's, that's where we can start, and look at the four hundred thousand as a reasonable number, and then we'll have to adjust depending on what reality tells us.
Right, I would say there's not, there's not a meeting in November, and I'm kind of guessing there probably wouldn't be a meeting in December either, and I'm also saying this isn't, doesn't, there's no pressing need that this has to be done right away, so.
All right, so we have a motion to send it back to the road advisory group?
Using the four hundred thousand total with a fifty percent assessment, yes.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I would like to make a motion to move ahead with the feasibility studies for the Pinnaker Lake Estates, as well as Old Viking, based on the information from the workshop. That would be a total cost estimated at six hundred ninety-five thousand dollars, and recommend performing the work using a fifty percent assessment.
Second.
Motion is second, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion is second, any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainbow.
I move that the council enter into a contract agreement with Eric Schoquist and Mary Wells for our assessments for the next five years.
Second. Motion is second, discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainbow.
I would just add into it that the, the total, based on an October eleventh email, is twenty thousand three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty cents. I'd like that added to the motion, so that's in the motion.
Mr. Mayor, before you add that as a final figure, and that, that could change. I mean, it's not set in stone that that is the amount.
That's what we would bill you quarterly, and in the last quarter, if you have parcels that increase or decrease in the city, that's that last quarter, you have a difference based on the regular, that's based on the numbers that we had before.
That's the annual.
Does that make sense?
So that number's annual, billed quarterly?
Correct.
The final quarter being adjusted.
Yep, exactly.
All right, any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I would just like to recognize Inoka County for their past service, and, I mean, they've done a good draw, job. I've never heard any complaints by the residents on them in a long time, so I would just like to thank them for their service and recognize them for the, the job well done.
And, and I, I agree, and I think that they, they have a very professional staff, they certainly made a very professional presentation. I think they're, they're, the opportunity we have with Schoquist and Mary Wells does save the city money, and they're also, they've done a very professional job here. But I, I think there's no complaints with the county, but it is a cost savings to the city to make the switch at this time. But I was very impressed with the service we've received from the county and the presentation that the staff made here, so. I do appreciate it as well. There's no ill feelings or reason to change other than it is a cost savings to our residents, so. Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion is second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned.
See a record?
Wait, 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 wait.
Oh. She was off about forty-five minutes.
You didn't tell me you were looking for a record.
It would have been, it would have made a difference.
You would have said, hey.
Hey, guys, doing it right.
You have a timeline. It would have made some of a concerted effort.
I thought you did pretty good. You stuck within your time limit, so you did a good job.
Well, that's what I told, I told Randy, if you were to hold her trying to set a record, I, I could have helped.
Yeah, and then, and then if these people, depending on
Do we need to take down?
Yes, you know.
Let's see, two standing, Marla.
Marla's got a question.
Where would you?
I'm looking at my greatest.
Do you have the roaming access? Where would I find?
No.
What would change?
Well, right now, it's just on the website, under a packet.
Okay, so I just need to scroll through it first.
Yeah, if you look under the packets, and then on one of them.
Okay. Well, that looks a little overwhelming.
If you try, try to follow it by the agenda, that kind of helps.
Okay, oh, gotcha, I didn't realize that was organized.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and then.
October meeting, they were talking about, might be achieved to work with old road, and things are coming fast.
Right here, yeah, see, some of the road, what I did is I did this.
Oh, okay.
But they did change that now, and now they're looking at doing a, and getting works done.
Okay.
In twenty eighteen.
Okay.
So what we're doing.
Like, in terms of past developments.
Right, so what they did is they put together to have a feasibility study, and then January will do a cost analysis, what the costs do, relate to those roads, and then how much it would cost, and then with the assessments of the property.
Okay, okay.
Exactly, so that would be coming into next year.
In the future, yeah, yes. Okay.
So, but can I just follow the agenda?
That was one thing I just, find the opposed road.
So it will be a few months before we even get the feasibility stuff done and in there. But if you want, you can write it down and leave it, but I can put you on our email list. I always keep, I have a pretty dense list, and I can email all sets to.
Oh, yeah. That would be great.
So write it on the, your, the sign sheet that I want you to do that, that would be awesome, I would appreciate that.
How are you doing, sir?
Good.
Good.
See you to be able to open your access. That looks great.
It looks great. Your, your first line, you grew up in...
Yeah, I did.
So I think it's available. We hear it's all, it's all there. They're concerned about how we've, they're all familiar.
Or like hired, like the upper management, the upper...
The image, the...
What's the order?
Be certain, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I'm Jeff.
Hi, Jeff.
I'm Jeff.
I never could tell me that, yeah.
I drew that.
Oh.
My bro.
What, you're making Christmas lights already?
Yeah, there's...
Oh, there.